All right, good evening and welcome to the May 22 school committee meeting and the school choice hearing. We're going to conduct the school choice hearing first. We'll hear from Dr. Marsden. The school committee can then ask questions or make comments. We'll then open it to the public for questions and comments in person and online. We'll then close the hearing and the school committee will be able to vote. So at this time, I'd like to open the school choice hearing with a roll call of the school committee. Michelle Kirkby here.
Diana Frashella here.
Leo Brim here.
Will Horn here.
Sophia Viglus here.
Thank you. At this time, I'll ask Dr. Marsden to discuss the school choice program.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. So as you know, we're required each year to have a school choice hearing to have that discussion. I sent you an email on May 19 that kind of highlighted what I feel about school choice and my recommendation. Of course, that's your vote and your decision, but I just, I'll read that, Madam Chair, if that's okay?
Yep.
So, under Mass General Law Chapter 76, Section 12B, "All school districts in Massachusetts are presumed to participate and admit non-residential students through the school choice program." School choice created an option for families to enroll their child in the school district outside of where the child lives. Essentially, if Medfield Public Schools participated in school choice, a student could live anywhere in Massachusetts and attend school in Medfield. Medfield has never participated in school choice for the past 30 years that it's been law. If you look at other like districts, you'll see the same pattern of voting no for school choice. For example, Hoppington, Dover Sherbrooke, Wayland, Weston, Wellesley, Needham, Concord, and Westwood do not admit students through the school choice program. Although there's an opportunity to gain revenue, and Michelle and I have talked about, you know, what, if you were to vote for it, what grade or grades we could have kids in, we'd gain revenue of $5,000 per student. Medfield currently spends $19,960 per student and add students outside of Medfield to our enrollment. And there are several concerns to consider when determining to participate in the school choice program, and they are as follows. Increase the class size over and above Medfield enrollment. Students, teachers, and parents enjoy lower class size at the secondary level especially. Additional non-Medfield students would increase the student-teacher ratio in both core classes and electives at the secondary level. We also want to keep to our school committee recommended policy numbers at the elementary level, and that might take us into another area there. Reduction of opportunities for Medfield students in addition to increasing class size and potentially limiting access to classes, electives, non-Medfield students would take away opportunities for athletic, music, and theater programs. Medfield taxpayers subsidizing the education of non-Medfield students. Medfield currently spends over $19,000 per student to educate Medfield students. School choice would require Medfield residents to subsidize the other $14,000 per student. Now, we know that if you have one or two students that come at a grade level, you're not going to just automatically add the $19,000, right? We understand how schools work and how budgets work. However, we would be subsidizing the rest of their education because they would, we'd only get $5,000. Lack of control when demand outweighs the slots. Lottery system would be in place if the demand for non-Medfield students is larger than all the seats open in a particular grade. Removing funding from other school districts while, and this is a philosophical thing, right? While school districts lose funds, staff, and programs get terminated, if Medfield were to participate, we'd be siphoning funds earmarked for schools in other town. Commitment to siblings enrolled in school choice students. Medfield has a responsibility to non-Medfield students' siblings if slots are available in a particular grade. Essentially, additional responsibility or expense for students that are not living in Medfield. And talking to local real estate folks, you know, parents always say they moved to Medfield for the schools, and why would you pay the Medfield prices if you could live somewhere else and still send your kids to Medfield? You know, I think if you look at recent publications that have come out in the last couple of months, so Boston Globe Magazine called Medfield the best place to purchase a house. A million dollars are over right now in Metro West, you know, with the amenities and the schools, et cetera. And then Boston Magazine cited Medfield for the highest percent of increase in home values over the last year, 29%, I believe is the increase. I think they ranked Medfield number eight as a place to, best place to live in the state. And if you look at that list, you'll see that I think you have to get to number 29 or 30 or something on that list before you find a town that accepts school choice. So I think these concerns and challenges highlight the impact of participating in the school choice program. Based on these reasons, I continue to recommend that Medfield Public Schools does not participate in the school choice program for FY '26. And I just said, please reach out to me because this was an email I sent to you the other day. So happy to answer any questions or if you folks have any additional input there.
Questions or comments from you guys?
I'm good.
I'm good.
All right, at this time, I will, I'd like to invite the public to share any feedback or questions about school choice. I'd like to try to keep comments or questions to three minutes to ensure everyone who wants to speak gets an opportunity to do so. If you're in person, please come to the mic. If you're online, please raise your Zoom hand. And no matter where you are, please state your name and address for the record.
Chris Potts, Seven Curb Street. I know you're all so surprised that I'm coming up to talk about this. So I just wanted to address some of the things that were in the superintendent's memo from last year and also were reiterated this year. So at the current time, we have just over 700 students at the high school. And at, you know, 2015, we had significantly more than that, over 800. So there's certainly size that we can, there's not really a whole lot of risk to increase in class sizes. There is a point where there is an ideal class size in the educational doggedy of 16 to 18 students in certain classes where the benefit, the high school students actually benefit from rich discussion and debate. The class sizes are actually better to be larger than six or seven or eight or 10 students. So, you know, you have to really look at the data to see what the class sizes are currently for certain classes. The reduction of opportunities for Medfield students, I think, is very, I'm going to say it's very ego-driven because in the music program, in the theater program, in the sports program, the students really like to have winning teams. And if there's a missing position, I can tell you trumpets, trombones, cellos, upright basses, these are the positions that are difficult to fill. If we had a student that came in and played one of those instruments, the students would be thrilled because it would increase their chances of getting to some of these festivals and competitions. I would think it would be the same with sports teams. So I think this is, if you look at the student body as a whole and the benefits to the students as a whole, instead of looking at it as a competition amongst students, it's much better. The attrition, we have attrition from eighth grade to ninth grade. Sometimes it's different, sometimes it's low, sometimes it's high. So there is space to make up for that attrition. There's no requirement, absolutely no requirement, to have to admit siblings. If you admit one person, one student from a family, you do not have any requirement to admit-
Chris, what's the law say on that? What's the exact language on that?
There's no requirement.
What is it?
I don't have the law from me, but I know there's not a requirement.
It says must give priority to.
Priority.
School districts establish a sibling preference policy when admitting students pursuant to GLC 7612B. So yes, you have to, you don't have to admit the student, but if you have an opening in that grade, you have to give preference to that sibling.
In that grade, sure.
Correct.
The implications to real estate, there's absolutely no, absolutely actual data out there that shows that. And, I mean, I think one of the most helpful things you could do is you have a school committee member sitting right here who actually works for a district that has had school choice for the past 10 years. And they have a limit of 25 school students. They've actually touted the high school as having it be a very, very positive revenue experience for a very small number of students. And I would think that if they had it for 10 years now, there'd be nothing but benefits to doing that. And what's interesting is that they actually, in this latest media outlet, media article, touted the fact that the theater program and the performing arts and generals would really benefit from this, school choice.
So Chris, we generate $3.5 million a year for this budget. And I don't know the town side. You certainly know more than that, more about that than I do. Are there any other town departments in Medfield that you know of that generate 3.5 million to offset their budget? Because you're talking about revenue now, right? So it's going to be gaining revenue? I think we do pretty well with the revenue, so I'm just curious.
But the question is, you're touting this, you're touting this-
No, you just talked about revenue. I want to hear what the revenue-
So you're touting the $18,000 per student, but if you have basically empty seats on the bus and you're going to get $5,000 per student-
It's 19/7, bud.
To make up, to make up for whatever gap there is. If you're paying, you're paying a teacher, you're paying for seats. You have-
I said that, didn't I say that before, that if it's one or two, it's not going to really change things?
My biggest concern is, is that there has never been data to show about this. There's never been a financial presentation. When I went back and looked at Dyton Rehoboth, when they first introduced us, this in 2015, there was a whole night spent basically on a presentation with data, with actual slides. Holliston did the same thing. We have never once seen in the whole time that I've been at these school committee meetings a presentation with actual data and financials. You can sit here and you can throw out questions to me about numbers-
I'm just, I'm just clarifications though.
But the school committee needs to see, the school committee itself should have, should see data. There should not be a one-to-one conversation with the chair to talk about this behind the scenes. There should be a public conversation about this with data.
Leo, do you folks lose, do you lose kids for school choice?
Well, you know, we do. We actually lose more school choice than we take in.
So that's probably why you would have a whole thing to go along with that, right?
We actually, so, not that we're here to talk about Dyton Rehoboth, but since it was brought up.
Well, I think it provides context to the comments, right?
Yeah, well, and I think, I maintain each year when this conversation comes up, that school choice is about a fit for the community. And it was designed for communities that were shrinking in size at a rapid rate, and they were trying to maintain programming by spreading the wealth or providing opportunities for smaller districts to send students to other areas. We, in fact, lose about 70, between 60 and 70 eighth graders from the time they leave eighth grade into our high school. We have a high school that used to make, used to contain about 1,100 students, and it now has, it's the same size as Medfield High School, around 630. So, in fact, Medfield's larger. Look at that. So, and again, that fit, and of those 25 seats, we only have 15 filled. So I don't deny that we have great opportunities and we're rebuilding in Dyton Rehoboth as a program, and that's something I'm a part of there. And in my role here, I maintain that we are not in the same situation as, say, Dyton Rehoboth. I don't call it dire, and we do have a wonderful arts program. Thank you for telling that, and I will pass that along, Chris, to our-
I would also say too, if I could, that the other example is Holliston. Well, Holliston has been doing school choice since the beginning. At one point, they were letting in over three, just about 300 kids, 296 in the 90s, okay? So they, they depend on that revenue for their budget, so of course you're going to have a financial presentation because that becomes a component of your budget. I worked in a district that had school choice. That becomes a component of your budget because that's a lifeline offset, kind of like what we do with our tuition for kindergarten, right? We present that as an offset, $3.5 million offset for FY '26. So when it becomes part of what you do, you're going to have a full financial, you're going to do that. But if you haven't participated and not planning to, you're not going to do that. It's just not going to happen.
Anne Mae?
Hi, Anne Mae O'Shea Brook, 111 Pine Street. It's funny being on this side of things right now. But I just wanted to add another element to this discussion, and that is, Medfield is a very tight-knit community. We're more than just our schools, where our community makes our schools so great. And my fear with school choice or accepting that is when you view the whole child, when you've got a student who is just coming in for school versus a child who is living here completely embedded, their family is embedded in the community, my hesitation or my thought goes to, are we really addressing the whole child? How do we follow school choice? I don't want to be exclusive, that's not my, my take here. However, it's really, one of the core values of Medfield is, you know, what is best for the child, the whole child. So that, I don't want, I would not, as a resident or even as a parent, I would not want a two-tiered system in our schools because I would want every child to feel like they belong everywhere within this community. So that's all I wanted to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone online?
Could I just add one more thing?
Sure.
Just going to, if we could take one off the list.
I would ask online.
To the point that we have with Leo where he was stating that they're losing students and that was lots of times the impetus for school choice is trying to offset that loss, right? And you want to see what that loss is. So this is what the Treasury gives the town, this is for the town of Medfield. Every month, we get a report like this, or the town does. So the top part is the local aid, and that's what the distribution is. You'll see that Chapter 70 is, in March of, March 31 of this year, was 549. School choice receiving tuition was zero. Unrestricted government, unrestricted government aid, 150. So that goes to the town. All this goes to the town side, does not come to the school department at all, and then it goes down. So then, the gross distribution was 735,000. Then you go down to the assessment. So that's the assessments, they take off the top, and then your distribution gets reduced by that. So you'll see school choice, 2,467. So that's every month, we lose $2,467 out of our Chapter 70, okay? And you go down a little further and you'll see that mosquito control projects, every month, 6,111. And then you go down a little farther and you'll see Mass Bay Transportation Authority at 27,000 a month. So I mean, I look at the assessments that we get each month as a town, and it feels more like we got a mosquito MBTA problem more than a school choice problem. We start looking at the numbers where it's 2,400 for school choice and it's 27,000 a month for MBTA, and almost three times as much to get rid of mosquitoes in town. So just want to kind of show you how that all plays out on the sheet every month and just to give you what the real numbers are and what it looks like.
And just to be clear, we've never had school choice. So it wasn't like we had school choice eight years ago or 10 years ago when other people in towns' children were, okay.
Correct.
So we've always been a non-school choice.
Right.
Okay.
All right, anybody else? Any more public comment?
Chris Potts again. The only other thing that I would mention is that one of the things that I really appreciated with the Dyton Rehoboth was that they really tied it back to their strategic plan. And I think that if our, we have an objective, a goal in our strategic plan, to look at diversity, you know, we've, there's been a lot of talk about wanting to bring in the Metco program. There's been a lot of talk about diversifying our school population, and that has been an objective, that is an objective that's in the strategic plan. So the comment about changing the character of our town honestly seems a little bit hypocritical given previous conversations that have taken place at the school committee.
I would think that you don't have a choice, right? Like I'm just being clear, if we had school choice, you don't get to look at a new list and say, oh, you're ethnically diverse, so we could choose you first.
No.
Right. So that, that doesn't automatically bring diversity into the town, whereas like a Metco program actually-
Does.
Does, but I know we're a little bit further outside the bounds. So I think that comparing school choice with Metco is a, is a tough comparison because they're, they're very different. Because my understanding of school choice, anyone is eligible to apply.
Correct.
Yep.
Anyone online?
No.
Any other comments in the room? All right, public comment for this portion will be closed. School committee, do you guys have any other questions or comments?
No.
No. Okay. Let's see. At this time, I would like to make a motion to close the school choice hearing.
Second. Motion.
You mean so move.
Motion, so moves.
Yes.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And then I need a motion on to vote or not to vote for school choice.
Should be to participate or not participate in the program.
Correct.
I'd like to make a motion to not participate in the FY '26 school year and school choice.
Second it.
All in favor?
Do I have to do it by name or not?
Aye. Sure, we can do it by name. Michelle Kirkby, yes.
Diana Frashella, yes.
Leo Brim, yes.
Will Horn, yes.
Sophia Viglus, yes.
Great, thank you. So that concludes the school choice hearing for this year. Move on to the regular meeting. So at this time, I'd like to open our main meeting. We'll call it to order with another roll call vote. Michelle Kirkby here. Diana.
Diana Frashella, here.
Leo Brim, here.
Will Horn, here.
Okay. So at this time, I'd like to open public input. Members of the public are welcome to comment during the public input, either here through Zoom. If you're on Zoom, please raise your Zoom hand. We ask that you keep your camera on when making a Zoom comment and that you follow school committee policy for public input, including speaking for no more than three minutes and only on topics under the purview of the school committee. And whether you're here in person or on Zoom, please state your name and address for the record. Public comment? Okay. So we're actually going to take the agenda a little out of order tonight. I'm very excited to have some of our organizations here this evening to present to us, so I understand that there is another event at 7 o'clock, so I'm going to try to get some of you out of here to help with that. So I'd like to start by turning it over to Janie Boylan and Karen Vasquez, the high school PTO for their year-end report.
Hello, my name's Janie Boylan, and I'm one of the co-chairs of the Medfield High School PTO, along with Karen Vasquez. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today to share an update of our activities during the 24-25 school year. The PTO's mission is to support academic, athletic, and co-curricular endeavors of student and staff at Medfield High. Our grant funding highlights include six grants. We funded crafts and project materials to support student-led community service projects within advisory groups. We contributed towards Honey, Medfield High School's new therapy dog, who has already been a comfort to many. We funded five new guitars and hand drum to meet the increased popularity of the guitar club. More students now can join in the jamming sessions. That made me sound cool. And we are really hoping that they'll play a few tunes at the all-night grad party. We funded seven new Decker blazers with 100% increase in Medfield High School Decker participation. These blazers will help ensure all qualifying students can attend the international competitions with the appropriate attire. The Medfield Model UN Club hosted for the second year the Model UN Conference here at Medfield High. The PTO honored a grant request to pay for their supplies and food to assist in making it a successful event. The senior launch night transportation, for the first time, the PTO is covering the cost of the buses transporting seniors to launch next Friday. Traditionally, this is funded through annual school dues, but significant drop in payments through MySchoolBucks this year led to a shortfall. This highlights the need for more consistent reminders for Medfield High School MySchoolBucks administrators to parents and guardians about sending reminders to folk who have still to pay their dues. Given the importance of ensuring our seniors' safety, the PTO has decided to cover the cost for this year only. In appreciation of our dedicated educators, Medfield High School PTO organized two teachers' luncheons, homemade soup and salad. Thanks, Sue. Thank you for organizing. And in, that was in January, and a Chipotle lunch in May. Thank you, Sue, for doing all of the coordination for that. We filled the teachers' room full of snacks and coffee during Teacher Appreciation Week, and we organized a special delivery of breakfast from local cafe Blue Moon, who very generously donated everything to help us. Thank the teachers and the staff for their incredible support during a particularly difficult time last week. To support the spirit at October's Pet Rally, we provided students and teachers with Medfield branded winter hats. In April, we arranged and paid for Dr. Michael Thompson to come and give his talk, "The Pressured Child: Helping Your Child Find Success in School and Life," to the wider Medfield community through Medfield Talks. At Senior Recognition Night tonight, we will be awarding four students scholarships, each valued at $500. The first Community Service Award, this goes to someone who has shown amazing volunteer work within their community. The second is the Excellence Award. This goes to someone who has shown excellence in academics and/or extracurricular activities. And lastly, we give two School Spirit Awards to students who have shown positive, motivating, and fun spirit within the school community. Recipients remain a secret for now. We're also funding the Teacher Inspiration Award. This is a student-nominated honor, recognizing a staff member who inspires, motivates, and uplifts students. The winner receives a $50 personal gift card and $450 grant to spend on enhancing their classroom or benefiting the students. Our fundraising efforts still include parent guardian contributions via PTO dues. We sold Medfield hats and scarves at sports games. We held a Republic Dinner fundraiser during the Super Bowl weekend, and we continue to ask for Venmo donations each time we're planning a teacher luncheon. One ongoing challenge we face is engagement. Attendance to PTO meeting is minimal, like, no one comes. We're exploring ways to make these gatherings more appealing and more valuable, including perhaps hosting questions-and-answer session with department heads, offering refreshments, cake, coffee, anything. We want parents and staff to feel welcome and heard, and for PTO meetings to be something that people want to attend. And I have a quick update from the all-night grad. A heartfelt thank you to everyone helping to make this year's all-night grad party an extra special event. In the wake of recent heartbreak in our community, we recognize the importance of creating space for our seniors to come together, both to support one another and to gently celebrate the journey they've shared. We are thoughtfully moving forward with the all-night grad on Saturday, May 31, while acknowledging that it will feel different this year, but we are committed to creating a joyful event that will allow space for connection, remembrance, laughter, and healing. We hope it offers a lighthearted, safe environment where our seniors can be together after what has been an incredibly emotional end to their high school years. We send our warmest congratulations to all the seniors and wish them happiness and success in whatever adventure lies ahead. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Janie.
All right, next up, MMA.
Hello, my name is Meg Kabazin, and I'm one of the co-presidents of the Medfield Music Association, along with Sue Tenhagen, who will speak in just a moment. We are very honored and, and proud to be able to present this year's many accomplishments that we made as an organization and that we have achieved in this past school year. Thank you for having us tonight. To start, I'd like to express my sincere gratitude to the school committee and to Dr. Marsden, to Jason Bealick, and the entire music staff, and the principals and staff at each school for their commitment to music education and in the, in the Medfield Public School system. I would like to thank our generous donors, community sponsors, and amazing volunteers for their incredible support of music in the public school system this year. This year was a good year for us. We funded several things, and I'm going to go through some of them. We started off the year by helping the school with a new fundraiser and community event, Swing Night, which was a night of jazz played by the high school jazz ensemble and swing dancing. The event was a success, and it brought over $2,100, as well as good publicity for the music program. Also this year, the MMA financed and purchased $1,600 risers for all music programs to use and to enjoy. We funded $1,000 of percussion repair. The MMA contributed $8,750 for clinicians and stipends. These include three stipends for the jazz program, including the Blake Jazz Band, the Middle School Jazz Lab, and Jazz II program at the high school. Clinicians for the high school programs, the Dale Chamber Orchestra, which my daughter is in, and the, and choral accompanis, accompanists. Can't say that word. The MMA was able to support our students further with $5,950 in scholarships. We offer scholarships and awards to seniors later tonight, juniors at a different ceremony, and encourage all fourth through 12th grade music students to apply for summer study and private lesson awards to make sure that they continue their music education over the summer and throughout the year. On top of our lesson awards, we contributed $2,500 in need-based scholarships for private lessons so that every student was able to have a lesson if they wanted to. Lastly, for me, a new fundraising initiative took advantage of having the entire music program in one room for the bandorama, string fling, and the choral extravaganza events, and we called it the $5 Challenge. And it was just that. We asked the audience to contribute $5 to support the students, and we made over $3,700 at these three events.
And I'm excited to say that our support doesn't stop there. As Meg said, my name is Sue Tenhagen, and I'm the other co-president of MMA. I'm thrilled to say that this year we also contributed $400 for those in financial need in order to attend the Orlando trip. For those of you that don't know about the Orlando Disney trip, I'll briefly recap for you. The band, chorus, and orchestra performed at Disney Springs on March 15th before a huge crowd. In addition to their performances, all three ensembles participated in a soundtrack workshop at Disney Imagination Studios. They had to sight read while working directly with industry professionals. Each ensemble then received a final professional recording of their work. Really cool. MMA provided two rental trucks that were driven to and from Orlando that transported all of the instruments, the equipment, and the uniforms. We also purchased and personally designed a Disney T-shirt for all 160 students that attended to have as a keepsake. And lastly, we provided thank-you gifts to all of the 12 really amazing chaperones that attended. I hope all of you have seen, either on social media or in the Hometown Weekly throughout the year, how accomplished and award-winning our music program truly is across all of the ensembles. So just to name a few of the major highlights, number one, we had solid representation at districts at the top-tier level with 10 7th and 8th grades selected students, 15 high school students selected for the senior districts, and two all-state participants. At New England Voices, Sound Waves placed in the top three for the first time ever. And the Big Trifecta, where all three ensembles, band, orchestra, and chorus, each earned a gold medal at the Massachusetts Instrumental and Choral Conductors Association Festival, which is truly an extraordinary accomplishment all around. So one of our goals this year was to ensure that these hard-working and talented musicians were really getting recognized, not only within the music community, but also outside of it. We made great efforts to enhance their exposure by utilizing our social media platforms and the Hometown Weekly newspaper to keep our community at large informed of their accomplishments, awards, and outstanding performances. Jazz Night took the house down. No shocker there, it always does. And MMA was able to provide the headliner and the world-renowned clinician Christine Fawson for the fundraising event. She's a female trumpet player and vocalist, and everyone loved her. Ryan Dexter is even hoping to have her come back again next year and do another clinic because she was so well-received by the students and the directors. MMA also provides dinners for students throughout the year to bridge the gap on days where they had both daytime and evening music commitments. There are days it is a full-time job. I would also like to thank the businesses from our community that provided support to the music program this year. There are several. We have BJ's Wholesale. We have Needham Bank, Roach Brothers, Cooked Perfect Meatballs, Shaw's, Mother Anna's Restaurant, Middlesex, Gravitate AI, Thistle Communications, and Manning &amp; Bill's properties. Lastly, we'd like to sincerely thank the music department and the administration for providing enriching opportunities and such a supportive and nurturing environment to all of our music students and their families. Medfield Music is highly competitive and widely respected across our district and beyond, and MMA is proud to support such a special and successful program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. And then Amy Cass from MCPE.
Hi, everyone. Amy Cass, I'm one of the incoming co-presidents for the 2025-26 school year for MCPE, which is the Medfield Coalition for Public Education. MCPE provides system-wide support and academic enrichment for all of Medfield Public Schools with a focus on academic needs that fall outside of the school budget. So we have two significant sides to the work that this organization does, our fundraising, which I'll speak to first, that then provides money that is available to the schools to be able to apply to for grants, again, against the mission of MCPE. So looking back at our 2024-2025 year in review, our first and our biggest fundraiser of the year was our November Fall Ball, where nearly 300 Medfield residents joined us for a lively evening at the Cape Club of Sharon. Some highlights of the evening included live games, DJ and dancing, great food, as well as an expansive silent auction, featuring a wide range of products, services, and experience donated by some of our favorite local businesses and personal donors. The silent auction alone helped raise over $17,000 on top of our ticket sales and corporate sponsorships, making Fall Ball yet again MCPE's biggest fundraising event, with a total net revenue of over $47,000. December, we hosted a holiday shop together with Eyeslide, again supporting MCPE, as well as a fundraiser with Chipotle in Town. In February, we hosted a fan favorite, the MCPE Trivia Night at the American Legion in Dover. And then March brought two events, both the return of our Bracket Challenge for March Madness, as well as the Spelling Bee, which is one of the most beloved events by the community that we host every year, by parents, students, and teachers alike. We had 392 spellers from Wheelock and Dale Street, so incredible participation from students, and raised over $11,000. So another really critical fundraiser from MCPE. In the spring, we brought back our Mother's Day Wine and Charcuterie Gift Fundraiser in support with Around the Plate and the Medfield Wine Shop, and then also added in a yard sign campaign for the Medfield M. Together, those two campaigns brought in around $6,000, as well as helping celebrate kind of the end of the school year and the celebratory time of year. So our last fundraiser for the year, which we just finished, was our Blue Ribbon Appreciation Campaign, which allows families to recognize teachers, staff, and administrators who've made a difference in students' lives over the year. The Blue Ribbon Appreciation Campaign was created to allow community members to honor teachers and school staff that have had a positive impact on the lives of students. And this year, we had an astonishing 115 educators who were nominated and celebrated just this past week at our annual meeting that was here in the library as well. And we received a total of 161 unique nominations. All-in MCPE this year raised over $100,000, available again for grants, which I am happy to speak to next. So this year, we funded close to $75,000 towards 18 grants across all five public schools, as well as some district-wide grants as well. And that included the new Gophi Therapy Dog, which was provided along with support through the Medfield High School PTO, as well as MCPE funding. So Honey, who is, you know, seen around the school, a very welcome presence, and together with her amazing handler Beth Sancher. This year, we also provided funding for the high school for photography equipment to expand course offerings and provide a sports photography class. Our core study was also expanded at Blake with the introduction of a community science program. Through this program, middle school students in 7th grade had the opportunity to build pollinator gardens and examine the effect on the community. Blake also received funding to enhance physical spaces, including both the Science Lab and Library Media Center, which will receive new furniture to specifically promote collaborative learning. Hands-on Learning will continue to excel at Blake with the new Cry Cut for math projects and coding programs to enhance English language art classes. Wheelock received funding for a button maker to incentivize reading, and Dale Street received funding to bring in two new and novel programs, so students enjoyed a hip-hop assembly emphasizing kindness, as well as a Matter in Motion Science Workshop led by the Discovery Museum. In addition, at Dale, grants funded 16 new laptop charging carts, which will be essential in ensuring all the Chromebooks are safely and securely charged, so that learning can continue seamlessly for the whole class. There's a few other grants. So assisting with learning through movement, Dale received Brain Balls to enhance PE and ELA classes. Faculty at Memorial will engage in a professional development titled Brain Gym Essentials. Students at Memorial have the opportunity for movement breaks on hallway tricks, and students at Wheelock also have chairs equipped with sensory tools to provide the opportunity to move while working. Memorial students also received a new piece of playground equipment that's on its way that will bring STEM learning to the outdoors. And last but not least, MCPE was able to provide partial funding to assist with hosting a multi-town Special Olympics, where Medfield students had the opportunity to participate, as well as cheer on athletes at the event. So a really strong year for MCPE, both in terms of being able to fund a lot of grants on the back of a strong fundraising year, and just really want to thank the educators, the school administrators, and the support of everyone in the community that really makes all of this possible. So thank you, as well as thank you for having me here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you to all three of you, actually. I mean, I love when you guys come at the end of the year and are able to really share, you know, what happened over the course of the year. Like, it really is just so much work and effort, but with such great reward on the end. So I just want to thank you all for your time and energy in this space, because it is like really, really awesome and amazing to hear everything that you guys have done. So thank you. I also want to say thank you to Maeve, because I know she's going to duck out shortly. So this is Maeve's last night with us, and welcome Hillary, who will be taking her seat next year. So Maeve, thank you so much for all of your contributions this year and sharing stuff on behalf of the students and just being a part of the process with us up here. So we really appreciate it, and good luck next year.
All right, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Let's see. So consent agenda, we have the approval and retention of executive session minutes from April 10th, 2025, approval of regular meeting minutes from April 10th, 2025, and May 5th, 2025, approval of additional Medfield High School Student Activity Award for graduating seniors, which will be 1,000 NHS Four Pillars Essay Scholarships, $500 to the students, and $500 to the students' charity of choice. And then I'm going to actually have Dr. Marsden read all the donations.
Okay, we have a long list of donations.
Yeah, a long list, yeah.
$3,000 from MHS Honor Society to CPAC account for Special Olympics, $12,000 from the American Legion Post Number 119 to be deposited in the Blake Student Activity Account for the 8th Grade Trip Scholarships, $500 from Gail Duffy to be deposited in MHS Gift Account for MHS School Renaissance Scholarship, $5,000 from the Medfield Alliance to be deposited in the Blake Student Activity Account for 8th Grade Trip Scholarships, $1,380 from the Blake PTO to be deposited in the Blake Student Activity Account for the truck-released bus transportation, $1,200 from the Blake PTO to be deposited in the Blake Gift Account for the Creature Feature Bus Transportation, $600 from the Blake PTO to be deposited in the Blake Gift Account for the Chinese Cultural Workshop, $200 from the Blake PTO to be deposited in the Blake Gift Account for the Art Show/Ice Cream Social, $6,000 from the Memorial PTO to be deposited into the Memorial School Gift Account to help fund new structures at the Memorial School Playground, $2,027.90 from the Memorial PTO to be deposited in the Memorial School Gift Account to fund two buddy benches, $809.91 from the Memorial PTO to be deposited in the Memorial School Gift Account to purchase Grade 1 Heidi Songs Grant, and $384 from the Memorial PTO to be deposited in the Memorial School Gift Account for the Natick Farm Visit to Preque. I ask that you approve as shared.
Does anyone have any edits or corrections or anything they want held or removed before we vote? Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as stated and read?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, next up, we have the...
Bye, Maeve.
Bye, Maeve.
Bye, Maeve. Hillary, you're in. We got questions tonight, so.
So next up, we have the final overnight trip approval for the Medfield High School Mandarin trip to China from Dr. Marsden.
Yeah, I know Robert and Elaine here to do a quick presentation and overview of the trip.
Hi, everybody. Just to, I want to apologize in advance, because I'm going to hand off to Elaine, because I got to go start the presentation here in a minute. But I'm very happy to be able to present this proposal to you. The last time our students were able to travel to China was in 2018. So it's been, you know, it was before COVID. Then the State Department had some guidance on student travel for the past few years, so we weren't able to go. Schools in the area are starting to go back to China. Some schools around here went this April. We are proposing a trip next April for our Mandarin students. We've gone before. Elaine, who teaches Mandarin at the middle school, and Yaya Zhang, who is our Mandarin teacher at the high school, who wasn't able to be here tonight, they've organized this trip, and they've traveled with our students before. We're excited. This partnership began when I first got to Medfield, and we've taken several trips there. The students from Bambu have come here. We've since expanded our trip to include other cities like Shanghai and Beijing, to make it more of a well-rounded trip. So there is a homestay component to this trip as well, but there's also just some incredible places that they're going to visit. I had the opportunity to go a number of years ago, and it was amazing. So I am going to run to start our presentation, but this is Elaine. They're going to take good care of you, I promise.
Thanks, Robert.
Thanks, Robert.
Okay. Hi, my name is Elaine. Thank you for having me. And I'm going to keep this presentation short, and try to be as sweet as possible. So here are six things we're going to talk about, meet the team, my China trip, where and where, and partnership with our travel agent, and the counselor, and questions and answers. So this is me, and I teach at Wheelock and Blake, and I have three beautiful puppies, Cotton Balls, 13 years old, Sierra, 3 years old, and Dakota, 5 months old. So, and my passion has always been travel, food, animals, and I involved, organized a two-China trip. One was 2018, and the one was 2020. So 2020, we couldn't go last minute on that trip preparation. And originally, we were trying, and we decided, but unfortunately, we couldn't go in 2020. And they say our one would be, uh, two members, Yaya, Xu Guangzhang, and she brings on many hats. She is excellent and outstanding teacher, and also has a lot of experience with handling food allergy, which we all need, in terms with other food. So why China trip is for students, for real, I personally believe nothing better than what you can see. It's totally different experience when you do the window shopping for food than you actually sit in the restaurant street to taste those food. Think of the whole and speak language, and growing as a person. When you go to especially completely different countries, you push yourself out of a comfort zone, and that's where you really grow perspective from a different, every single angle, and also gain confidence. This is a three-minute video clip highlighting our two-part Asian trip, uh, the Asian trip, the Latin Asian partner school, Latin partner school, and Shanghai.
You can play it if you want.
Smell in Beijing, had tons of dumplings. Dunkin' Donuts. And that's how our partner school dancing from each other in the classroom.
I think this school is very vague, but also very clean in general here. It's very enthusiastic and also very welcoming.
Huge welcome to our students. Hi, and my brother also came over to say hi to our students. Students were learning how to make dumplings. So that highlights of our trip. So, all right, I don't know what happened, but... So draft agenda, we are going to stay, planning to stay in Beijing for two days, and we're going to climb on the Great Wall and visit some historical sites. And then from there, we fly to Chengdu, Bambu, Chengdu, and Panda's hometown. And we spend one day to work with Panda closely at Panda Center. And then from there, we are going to fly to Anhui, Bambu, which where our partner school at. And then from there, we are going to take a high-speed train to Shanghai and spend two days and fly back to Boston from Shanghai. So that's our agenda. Oh, here's a picture, Beijing, Chengdu, and Anhui, and Shanghai.
Elaine, what part of the trip are the homestays?
It's Anhui.
Okay.
So we're going to stay with the host family for three nights, and students really, really had so much fun.
These students were their own host families?
Yes. So there's a, there's a very funny story, and one of the students told me, says, "Teacher, do you know what I have?" No idea. Says, "My host mom prepared Western-style breakfast and Chinese-style breakfast, and she made me two sunny set-up or sunny set-down egg." I always get confused with up, sunny set-up. So he made a comment, he says, "Oh, my God, it's so delicious." And the host mom disappeared for a few minutes and bought four more. So he had six eggs with other food. So, yeah, host families always, and they really had so much fun. All right, we are partner with hard travel partner, travel agent. Also works with high school for Costa Rica trip. And cost breakdown, pretty much the cost depends on how many enrollment. From 15 students would be somewhere around $4,700. If 25 students, cost will be a little bit less. And the trip, the price include pretty much everything except trip insurance and family and students are responsible for the passport visa application fee, which is somewhere around $200. It's a pretty easy process. And beverage with, actually, the meal, we pretty much covered all meals, and checking luggage may be extra, depends on airline.
And this trip is open to just students taking Mandarin? But at any grade, or is it only for upperclassmen? 10th to 12th grade? Thank you.
What's the enrollment of the Mandarin program today?
How many students are taking Mandarin at the high school today?
I don't remember. Top of my head.
Look that up, yeah.
Okay, I mean, enough to get 25.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
Elaine, do you anticipate 2025? Do you anticipate that many kids? Or, I know you had a waiting last time, you had a waiting list.
Probably somewhere between 25.
Yeah, okay.
Well, my niece loves your class. She's in third grade, and she talks to me. She tells me everything she learns in your class. So I hear about you quite a bit.
Thank you.
It's always good.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the trip to China in April 26.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I forgot everything. All right, so next up, we have draft policy FJ, renovations and/or improvements to school or school sites by non-district parties, informational. So a little, I guess, background on this policy specifically. So conceptually, it's not about trying to slow down any ideas or anything that comes to us. It's more about adding an extra layer of consistency and kind of like checks and balances, and just an extra check of oversight on any projects that are going to impact school buildings or grounds that are being originated outside of Medfield Public Schools. And kind of also just to ensure that for all current or future committee members, they're able to have as much visibility into construction, renovation, or site improvement projects, again, that are not being driven by Medfield Public Schools. Just so if we're in a space where we have projects that are spanning over multiple years or changing scope or things like that, that the final approval will come from here so that the current committee members will be able to review and ask questions and things of that nature.
Is there, forgive me, I should know, is this a new policy? Or is this a...
It's a new policy, yeah.
And this, we've deemed required outside of just more of an awareness, as school committee does have full control over the grounds and buildings. And so, I mean, do we foresee construction happening by outside entities other than originated by Dr. Marsden and her staff?
Well, so where we ended up right now, right, so we sometimes have youth sports asking to do certain things, right? So this would be like, they wanted to come in and put a shed somewhere, like the solar canopies would fall under here, right? Like, Girl Scout and Boy Scout troops sometimes come and want to do improvements on the school, which, again, like, it's...
I see what you're saying.
Just making sure that we are in the loop in that space of things that are coming from outside.
I didn't know if something had occurred, or, yeah, that's all.
Yeah.
Any other districts that had similar policies?
Correct.
Yeah.
Do we know how many requests this would be, give or take, in any given year? Like, I know the solar one, this year, obviously, so that's one, but like, just...
It could be under five, I feel like, you know? I mean, we get requests every once in a while for things from outside groups. It really depends. I mean, I think lots of times youth sports will want to do it, you know, because if they want to upgrade their fields or they want to put up a new scoreboard or something like that, so that typically... I think about, it was softball a couple of years ago that wanted to put up a batting cage over at Wheelock. You know, we worked with them on that. So just, I think, smaller projects like that. But it makes a lot of sense, I think, for you folks to be involved in that, too.
This is informational, so it doesn't need anything right now, but if we had questions or thoughts or concerns, and then it will be for two more times.
Two more.
So we'll see it two more times before we get to a space in that. Any other questions?
Oh, it's just a matter of procedure. I mean, I shouldn't have gone to the subcommittee.
So Tim and I actually talked and worked on this before he left, and that's why I reached out to you last week.
Gotcha. Reached out to me last night, just curious.
Yeah. But I guess in that space, if you want it to, we can have it go formally through...
I don't want to slow it up.
It doesn't, and we can have it formally go through the subcommittee if you want to.
They're all here.
We might want to add additional people as well, then.
I was just curious.
Okay. All right, moving on to, are there any other items since posting on May 20th?
I don't have any, I'm sure.
Okay. So then, next up, old business, mobile phone, social media task force update.
Oh, yeah, so we did actually meet. Weird, because I feel like we met three times and now didn't meet, now we, I think we met like three weeks ago or whatever. But, yeah, where that's at is we split up into groups. So there's, I guess, 27 people on the committee, and now there's a group of community norms, handbook policy, parent support and education, and then school curriculum. And so at the last meeting, we spent, you know, a little over an hour in those groups trying to brainstorm. Obviously, a lot of them are intertwined, so we also worked a little bit on like, you know, parent support and education versus community norms, where the overlap is. But like I say, when I do these updates, it's a unique committee, because there's no, like, end date, and not even totally like a goal. We're just trying to work towards, I think we only have one more meeting, and there'll be a recommendation, I think, to Dr. Marsden that he'll then give to us on, like, suggestions. I mean, community norms on like what we want the policy to be or change, but it's like, it's just a weird one, because I'm on the community norms group, so we are talking about things like what is a more, what is it like, right now, the ages, just so everyone knows if people aren't in the loop on this, but the people, the ages, our students have phones or watches, it's just getting younger and younger. And most data you read on the topic says this is not a good thing. We're hearing from our administration, it's getting younger and younger, and the principals are getting worried that there's just more watches flying around. So in the community norms group, we're talking about like what age might be appropriate. And I think the other arms of that, like in the handbook and policies, what can we create to help support that? How can we educate our parents on this problem? And then in curriculum, how can we educate our kids on all of the dangers of technology? And we know technology has good things, but again, I'm focusing on kind of what we're doing here. But so we have one more meeting, we'll meet in these groups, we'll see what we come up with, and Dr. Marsden will present that to us, but, yeah, you know, it's chugging along. Social media, phones, technology, although there are good things, that's not the main focus of this group. We know they're a problem for everyone from our age down to our kids, and we're trying to address it, and hopefully be like a leader in the space. Like, what I say to people is my goal, when they ask me about this, is for like in five or 10 years, we made a big change, because this will take a long time, because kids already have phones in Dale, or maybe even younger. So my goal, and this is just me speaking, not for the whole committee, but like, in five or 10 years, we did a change, and I'm like very proud of us for our community being a leader in the space of mobile technology.
So, Will, I was a...
Or lack thereof, yeah.
It's part of a group last night that reviewed a couple of bills, one a Senate, one a House bill, that they're trying to get feedback on from superintendents. I'm going to share our next meeting, just to kind of go through it. But it's fascinating, some of the language that's in the bills, and I think it's probably too much in one bill, they're trying to accomplish a lot in one bill, it's probably three separate bills, but you'll like that. I thought of it last night, because embedded in there is not to have cell phones until 16 or older. And that's something you've been saying all along, it's part of that group, you know? So that's actually in the bill, they put an age to it. I'm not sure if it will ever make it, but, you know, it's interesting that it was along the same lines of some of the stuff you've been talking about for months.
If anyone in the community listening to this, which there's probably like seven people out there, but if you listen to this, if you want to talk about this, find me. Because I've been, my new line is, the first time I saw something on this was Sherri Turkle, and it was called Alone Together, and I think it was 2011 was the first TED Talk I watched on this. So I think technology in the hands of our young people is very bad, and this, I want to speak for the whole community, but if you want to talk, anything, phones, devices, watches for your kids, please come see me, because I'm happy to learn, and I'm trying to always stay up to date and read things on this topic.
I could just mention, I've seen some interesting trends amongst some of my children, and one of them is in sixth grade, even with availability of the watch, that the watch does not get worn. And I don't know if that's a cultural aspect, maybe Hillary can shine a light on that, maybe. I know you're way older than sixth grade, but the watch is in the backpack, and so I can't get a hold of it even after hours. And so, and I know, I'm noticing that cultural shift even locally here with our friends not having, as many of them having phones as when my eighth grader went through. So I see at least that trend to resist some of the phone relinquishing until later on. So, and there was a large portion, as you know, called Wait to Eighth back in the day, or around at some point, which seems to have taken effect. So I think maybe you might realize your dream as it continues to progress.
I realize most of my dreams, I'm pretty lucky, so we're...
So you said you guys don't have an end date, which I totally understand, but do you have any targets right now on when you're looking to, I guess, have education for parents or...
Yeah, sure, so like, what, Jeff, so we, Mr. Dr. Vaughn, that, oh, Dr. Vaughn, we're going with like short-term and long-term goals. So short-term is what Jeff will present to us, like, so we're trying to figure out what can we come up with in all four groups, like now? And then longer term, like maybe next June, like what are we looking for? So we know we can't, you know, in a month, say, take all your phones away from everyone, you know, at whatever age we deem appropriate as a community and whatever we're shooting for. But so there are like short-term and long-term checkpoints.
Okay. Is there conversation about doing something at the middle school similar to the high school, where we have kids put the phones in the pockets, like during their classes? Because I think that there is an issue at the middle school, and I know that like is a debated topic by others, but, you know, I guess I just don't understand if we are concerned about the younger kids, why, like, we have the phone pouches for high school, but we aren't enforcing in a middle school.
Well, I'd say to the first part of your question, it is a topic of conversation.
Okay.
And to the second part, there are students on the committee, too, and it is a different vibe. I don't know if Jeff wants to, but like the, I mean, sorry, like you said you see a problem, like...
Well, I see a problem with, like, for, like, I just think there are kids in middle school using phones, and they bring them to school, and there's a high percentage of them that do have phones, especially by six, seventh, eighth.
Right.
Yes, and I mean, it's like, they're not using them, but they're in their bag. I know many parents are getting texts from their kids throughout the day about stuff, whether they're texting their friends or not, but I guess my thought is if we're policing it at the high school in some ways, you know, is that a conversation, or why aren't we policing it at the middle school as well?
I think that was something I think you asked around.
Well, I know, but I feel like the committee is coming up with recommendations, I thought, about what the school or like...
The handbook for the middle school.
Yeah, exactly. So I did, so I thought that was part of the committees, like, yes, I could, that's why I didn't know if it came up as part of the committee conversation.
It's all under there. The only thing I think I would say, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but like the, you know, two years ago or whatever, the high school was not lawless, but like, we didn't have the way for the teachers to check that all 24 students have it. We're in the middle...
Is there conversation about doing something at the middle school similar to the high school, where we have kids put the phones in the pockets? Like during their classes? Because I think that there is an issue at the middle school, and I know that like is a debated topic by others, but. I, you know, I guess I just don't understand if we are concerned about the younger kids, why like we have the phone pouches for high school, but we aren't, we aren't enforcing it in middle school?
Well, I, I'd say to the first part of your question, it is a topic of conversation. Uh, and to the second part, there are students on the committee, too, and it is a, a different vibe, I don't know if Jeff wants to, but like the, I mean, uh, sorry, like you said you see a prob, like.
Well, I see a problem with, I like, for like, I just think there are kids in middle school using phones, and they bring them to school, and there's a high percentage of them that do have phones, especially by six, something eight.
Right.
Yes, and I mean, it's like, they're not using them, but they're in their bag. I know many parents are getting texts from their kids throughout the day about stuff, whether they're texting their friends or not, but I guess my thought is if we're, we're policing it at the high school in some ways, you know, is that a conversation about why aren't we policing it at the middle school as well?
I think that was something, I think you're asking around.
Well, I know, but I feel like the committee is coming up with recommendations, I thought, about what the school, or like.
Handbook for the middle.
Yeah, exactly, so I did, so I thought that was part of the committees, like, yes, I could, that's why I didn't know if it came up as part of the committee conversation.
It's all under there, uh, the only thing I, I think I would say, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but like the, you know, two years ago or whatever, the high school was not lawless, but like, we didn't have the, the, the way for the teachers to check that all twenty-four students have it. Where in the middle school, it's supposed to be like out of sight all the time.
Correct.
So.
Yeah, but it's not.
Rules get violated, you know, we, yeah, I mean, we know that, but if it's.
I would say the issue we're having in the middle school is a lot of our own watches.
The watches, and I think subs.
Yeah.
Sometimes, like, right, I think, yes.
Before school tough.
Yeah, so, everything is being talked about, um, but that, the only, sorry, to close my thought, but like the, it almost like the, what, how it's written or how the rules are supposed to be, which we know are broken by kids all the time, is like, it, it's like they shouldn't even be out, whereas high school kids, they're out, so we said during class time, let's throw them in the school, the shoe locker, so it's been talked about, but it almost feels, again, I'll say just me speaking, like, it would be like going back, because they're supposed to not, they're using them, but they're supposed to not be seen, so it's a little.
Right.
But maybe it wa, you know, if we find great success.
I think Matt was gonna look at it through the lens of the handbook for the, before you guys do that in, in August, you know, take a look at, you know, what language is in there now, what can be changed to kind of beef that up a little bit.
Well, thank you, guys. Um, next up, we have the Medfield School Building Committee update. Can I take that?
Sure, um, we, we have submitted, uh, just about everything in Module One to MSBA, so the SBC listing, the maintenance of buildings, the educational questionnaire, am I forgetting, Michael? Yeah, the committee, SBC listing, yeah. So we, we've submitted everything that we can do at this point to MSBA, um, they're looking at it, and then they're gonna give us feedback on that, so we're hoping, the enrollment is the other one, the enrollment is the one that, um, they're looking at right now, they told us, so that's really good news, they're gonna start doing that, so hopefully get that enrollment meeting sooner rather than later. Uh, but no indication on whether or not we can, we're gonna jump ahead of anyone in line for a meeting or anything like that, we're still, you know, scheduled for early twenty-six, I think, so we're hoping to, to get in before that. Our, our goal was June, I think, at the last meeting, submit everything at the end of June, we submitted all before the end of May, so we were, we're a month ahead of that schedule with that.
And the articles passed at town meeting, so thank you to.
Just great.
Everybody who supported those, um, and still looking for neighborhood captains. The grassroots movement has gotten bigger, they've gotten more, but they still need more, so if you know anybody who would be, um, a good neighborhood captain, um, send them our way. Anything else on that? Leo?
Uh, you might mention there was some leadership shifting on the, on the board. Um, for those who don't know, Mike Weber, who participated in the last SBC and, um, was co-chair of this particular one with, um, with Ms. Chamberlain, um, is, uh, moving out of town, so, pointing the plug on his run, and, uh, and so we have, who took over?
Carolyn Casey and Bill Warner.
Carolyn and Bill have stepped up to, to, uh, co-chairs, and we think the co-chair model works very well, because it is a lot of work, and so having two people to split that is, um, very helpful, so grateful for them for stepping up on that, because it is a long, uh, it's a long number of years in this process, so.
Alright, next up, we have community engagement and communication. Um, I was at the final Dale PTO meeting last week, I think. Um, overall, it was a good meeting. Honestly, don't remember what we talked about, but I think they had a really good year, similar to, um, the other orgs here, right? They brought in some, some fun, um, fun activities for the kids throughout the year that were really well received, um, and did a lot of work just to enhance, um, the school experience in fourth and fifth grade, so it was positive, so. Any other updates?
I think Kid Eight had their end year meeting, um, this week as well. Uh, it talked a lot about how to like re-engage families and volunteers and sort of the struggle and the impact that that can have on activities and events for students, because it's just, it's getting so much harder to have the bodies there to make all the events happen, so that was a lot of the conversation.
Was there any aha moments of how that's gonna happen?
Um, I mean, no, I think there's a couple of big events that we talked about, maybe trying to figure out, um, dividing up the responsibilities, like for the, um, the Rainbow Run by school as opposed to just one person, or trying to be creative that way. Um, and doing a better job of, um, of letting people know like where the money goes to, and trying to be, uh, a little bit more transparent about like, hey, this is what you gave in, and this is, this funded this event, this event, this event, I like, we, we like to put together, um, a graphic about that and trying to do that for the other schools, um, just more frequently, um, for people to see sort of where, where the money goes, but I think that a lot of it is just the, the showing up to volunteer, we sort of, um, Dale canceled one event, and we talked about like, will other events just have to be canceled, just so that, I mean, things can happen with enough staff to make it run smoothly.
Anything else?
That's a downer.
I think it's been the same conversation, though, for the eight years I've been in the school systems.
Um, so we had talked about moving the workshop to Tuesday, June seventeenth, so I just wanted to confirm that that move worked for everybody and try to set a time. Yes? Leo?
Gosh, I hope so, yes.
It works for me.
Timing wise?
I can do, I can do anytime that day.
After, she, you said after four, right?
Yeah, I mean, I can safely be here by four, I mean.
Oh.
Three forty-five on, or three thirty on two wheels, but.
Wait, started at four?
Yes, we would move it to the afternoon, evening.
Oh, oh, yeah.
And that definitely works for me.
That works?
Yeah, I can do it.
Not to brag, but we'll be interviewing OPMs for our building project.
Oh, good for you.
Well, I mean, you did mention that, so.
So start at four PM?
You wanna do that four to seven-ish, and have dinner?
Sure, dinner, yeah.
Four to seven with a dinner break?
Yep.
Perfect.
I'll take the lobster.
Lobster, one lobster for Leo.
Yeah.
Okay, um, again, I wanna welcome Hillary. Um, I don't know if you have a school update or any update that you'd like to share, but we'd love to hear it if you do.
Yeah, so the past couple of weeks, we've been having the AP exams, which have gone really well, um, and then you have graduation coming up on May the first, and then that night, you have the all-night grad for the seniors, um, and more on the student council level, we had the student government elections today, and the student council elections for the general council, which is next week.
Awesome, thank you.
Busy, busy time of year.
Yeah, it is a busy time of year.
Madge, I just wanted to highlight the letter that was in your materials.
Yep.
One of our students, Dylan Olivetti, Olivetto, excuse me, um, he received a letter from Chief De King, and I just wanna read it out loud, just because I think it was really a great letter for someone to get. "Dylan, on behalf of the Medfield Fire Department, I want to personally thank you for your quick thinking and selfish, selfless, um, actions on May sixth, when you stopped to help an elderly man who had fallen and suffered a head injury. Your decision to call 911 and stay with him until our first responders arrived made a real difference. In moments like these, every second matters. In your calm presence and willingness to assist brought comfort and safety to someone in need. It's clear you acted with maturity, compassion, and a strong sense of civic responsibility. We are proud to have young people like you in our community, your actions reflect the very best of Medfield, and I commend you for stepping up for a critical, in this critical moment. Please don't hesitate to reach out if you're ever interested in learning more about emergency services or exploring ways to get involved, we'd be happy to have, welcome someone with your character and initiative. Sincerely, William De King, Chief of the Fire Department." So that was just awesome, you know, just a great, uh, great thing, he, Bill had CC'd me on that, and I know the select board also, um, got a copy of that through Christine, and just shows the character of our kids and quick thinking and didn't panic and, you know, possibly really helped out that, that elderly man, so I wanted to just give him kudos and I wanted to share that publicly with you folks as well.
We're safe on South Street. That's a terror, tell me, his mom told me.
My road's especially safe.
That's right.
I'll be fine on the road.
Any other informational items? Okay, so, future agenda, uh, we've, uh, we heard tonight from some of our organizations, we'll be hearing from, uh, the K38 PTO and CPAC at our next meeting, uh, honoring the twenty-twenty-five retirees, uh, CPAC will also be, um, on hand to present the Jim James Awards, and we'll get an update on the strategic plan. Um, so our next meeting is June fifth, um, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, alright, thanks, guys.